Okay, welcome to the December 4th meeting of the Southampton Village Planning Commission. There are three items that have been on our agenda recently. Just want to review where we are with the first two and then we'll talk somewhat about the third. So, we are, we have a study underway about a potential rezoning of North Sea Road between Boden Square and Catty Road 39. I think that study is 75% complete. And hopefully in the next few months, we'll hear back on that study and talk about whether there'll be a rezoning. That's an area that's now zoned for office district, but there's fairly low office demand right now. Secondly, we have been working for quite a while on the potential creation of a sewer district in the village center. The trustees hired H2M and Fale Fritz to do that study. Their work is underway and we will be hearing about that in the next few months. I think the first item they're going to come back to us on is confirming the potential properties that would be included within the sewer district. And I think part of the question will be whether or not we believe that that should extend up North Sea Road, past, say, past Jagger Lane, for example. So, that is the other thing that's on our agenda and obviously very critical for the village. So, the third item, and obviously very much focus, is the review of the current zoning in what I'm going to call, for lack of a better name, the FEMA zones. So, within the zones that are now being impacted by the new FEMA map that came out last year, was it Mark?
2009.
Well, 2009 and then was amended afterwards.
Yeah.
Right. So, within this zone, we know, obviously everybody is aware, the recent applications have indicated that the new zones are going to have real impact, which is most evident right now along Gin and Meadow Lane in terms of the applications that have been made there. But when you look at the maps, they actually extend a good deal along, for example, Old Town Pond, Cooper Pond, Holsey Neck Lane. So, the type of applications we're seeing on Gin and Meadow, we know soon will likely occur on those streets also. So, the impact is beyond just the zone along the ocean. It's also all the area that's covered in that map. And that's an area where had not been included when we did the revision of the residential zoning in the smaller zones in 2007. And just, you know, as a reminder, in those zones, we had done a number of things, including use of the pyramid law, changing the setback rules, and tying the size of lots to the allowable square footage to try to bring under control the type of houses that were being built in those zones and also make it a little more predictable for everyone what you could and couldn't do. So, within that context, the trustees have approved a moratorium and there is a study being done by Nelson Pope. And they're going to be coming back to us on January 8th, which is the first Thursday after New Year's. And we're going to have a public hearing for them to present their findings as of that date. And we're going to be asking the public for comments. I would expect we will, as we've had in the past, invite groups in for workshop meetings also so we can get into more depth. And then hopefully we'll be able to come back to the trustees with a recommendation. I want to go through some early thoughts, you know, as we've started to look at it and then throw it open both for the commission and for members of the audience. We really would like to get public comment and incorporate that so that when we discuss this on the 8th, hopefully it reflects what we're hearing. So, just some early thoughts and then I'd like to first ask any members of the commission, if they have any comments, and then members of the audience. So, I guess the first thing is that one of the things that has become obvious as we've looked at what is happening with recent applications is that the current village zoning, there is a, height is used in a way that reflects history, I would say, and practice. And we don't have as defined a view of height as other jurisdictions have. And so, one of the things I think we're all looking at is whether or not there's a better way to define height, both so that it's uniform and so everyone understands what it is. And that's something that hasn't changed in the zoning code in, I think, about 30 years. So, it's clearly time to take a look at it. Secondly, I think one of the early thoughts is the fact that in these areas that we don't have a pyramid law or the type of setback rules we have in some of the other zones, we think is something we need to seriously look at because it certainly is creating building form, if you will, that would not be able to be built in some of the smaller zones. So, what we've seen in the smaller zones now is people are generally building a building where it has a fairly traditional profile that starts in a larger ground floor and then steps back as you go up. And because those rules do not apply in the FEMA zones, we're seeing applications that are really very different and have houses that are fairly bulky and uniform in type. Third is, you know, as we've talked to, and I'd like to hear more about tonight, as we've talked to people about houses they find work or don't work, I mean, one of the things I think we are hearing more and more is that houses that reflect a more traditional building form, if you will, seem to not generally be as offensive in people's minds than houses that don't. And fourth, and maybe this is obvious, but I think very important in looking at this, as I said at the beginning, this is a problem that is not going to go away. Climate change is not going to disappear. But also, we see even in the last five to 10 years, the areas that are covered by these rules getting bigger. And I think, looking at the future, we would have to expect that the area that FEMA is going to cover is going to grow, not shrink. And so, it's an important point in time, I think, for us to take some control over this because it's probably an issue that's going to grow in the village as the area that has potential flood issues grows. So, those are some of our early thoughts. I don't know if anyone in the commission wants to say anything or otherwise we'll throw in a comment. Yeah?
Well, I think that my recommendation, and I will speak to Nelson Pope, would be that there would be a separate path for the construction permit application when you're in the FEMA zone, where a lot of the aspects of the design need to be reviewed very differently when you're in a FEMA zone when you're not in the FEMA zone. One being that the base flood elevation in some of the areas are up to 10, 12, 14. And actually Meadow Lane, for example, is at elevation 3. So, the base elevation at which the height of the building is measured starts some, like, nine feet above the street level. And then also where the septic systems need to be installed, you know, the water is right there. So, now the septic system needs to have at least three feet of cover above the water table. So, the retaining wall needs to be built around it. So, I think they should be reviewed in a completely different path, you know, with much more of an overall picture and...
Right. And we sort of have a precedent for that because on the, so Meadow Lane on the bayside, there was different zoning that was imposed by the village several years ago. And it's an interesting precedent in some ways because on the one hand, it dealt with many of the issues. On the other hand, it did allow people who had sites to be able to go ahead and build. And obviously, a lot of buildings has happened since then. So, it's provided a fairly, again, a fairly predictable way for people to know what they have and what they can do. And it's interesting, since that zoning was imposed on that part of Meadow Lane, the application process has been, I think, reasonably non-controversial. So, which is ultimately, you know, as a planning commission, what we would hope is we get to a point where everyone knows what the process is and each application is not as difficult an issue as it is now.
Just to clarify, you're referring to the wetlands, the guidelines that we gave. So, they're not law, they're guidelines that the zoning, the CBA can follow and whoever's making an application knows that they follow those guidelines, that their application will surely be approved.
Right.
So, that's...
And everyone has done that so far.
Yeah, so we can, instead of complicating things, we can make guidelines also for the FEMA zone, for sure.
But these elevations also has a lot of impact in between adjacent neighboring properties. When you're going to build a house that starts nine foot above it and there is no side yard, you impact your neighbor in a way that was not foreseen.
I just want to bring, I'm a volunteer fireman for the village and I look for fire protection, is how do we get vehicles? How do we ladder this building? Some of these buildings that are raised as high are in swamps. And they build the septic system in front. And if they build a septic system in front, and it's got to have a nine-foot-high concrete wall, there's no trucks going to enter this building. So, you have to take that into consideration.
That's why the review needs to be separate, different.
So, I would ask for comments from the audience, just if you're going to say anything, if you could move to the front, because otherwise I think Charlie's going to have trouble picking up the audio.
Or the podium.
Or the podium. So, comments. And could you identify yourself, please? Thank you.
Can you head?
Good.
I wanted to give you a... To hand them all into you.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't want to. How we doing, Charlie?
Put it in there, leave it in there. Keep that far away.
He's been giving me coaching, you'll see that. First of all, I'd like to just identify myself as a stakeholder in this whole debate. I'm a resident of 466 Gin Lane. And currently, I'm impacted by one of the houses that's going through the moratorium. So, I just wanted to make it, you know, really clear that, you know... But having said that, I think I'm not fighting my own cause here, but fighting Southampton's cause because the current proposal that's going through the moratorium is seven feet higher than it would have been had I agreed to it way back when, when it was two glass boxes on the beach. You know, just back to your point, Mr. Chairman, earlier on, I mean, there's a lot to be said for visual houses coming up. And the original proposal for this house was actually seven feet smaller. So, by fighting it, and I've spent $150,000 fighting it, by fighting it, we've got actually what looks like a very nice building now, but it's still a monster. So, it has had some improvement. And I can say safely, I think, a lot of these things because that moratorium here is closed. So, you know, they've closed it to further information. So, I think I can speak openly with you. But I wanted to, first of all, just give you one or two of my observations, you know, just coming through this process and hopefully I can share this with you. I put in the front of this presentation some FEMA zone maps, which you have probably seen. But it's kind of interesting and some of the things that struck me first when I first saw these, you know, the red zones, and the first two pages actually just separate Southampton into east and west. The red zones here, the purple zones, are actually the VE zones. The orange zones are the AE zones. The yellow zones are the X 500-year zones. And the white zones are, you know, the greater probability than that. But the first thing that struck me was there aren't that many VE houses actually in the district. And funny enough, if you count them, it's only about, less than 50, probably 30, something in that range. And the VE ones are the most extreme. The most extreme height happens when two things occur. When you're in a high VE zone and when you have a small natural grade, when those two things occur, you're in a perfect storm. Because if your natural grade is at zero, then that means the lowest building limit you can start from is VE, is, if you're in VE 17, it's 17 plus 2, so that's 19. And then you add 35 feet on top of that, that's 54 feet. That's 54 feet off grade. So, that's the highest that you can get to. And what I did, if you take a look at map 3 on here, is just showed you exactly where I am. Where I've marked Old Town Road here, my house is actually the one just to the bottom, below Old Town Road. And you'll see that's a perfect storm. It's a perfect storm because it's a low natural elevation and it's in VE 17. But it's back to your point earlier, we're right next to Old Town Pond. And it's really the pond that's actually causing a lot of the problems. It's not the ocean that causes problems. You probably know all this. One thing that's interesting, if you just go onto map 4, funny enough, as you go along Gin Lane and you take a look at some of the houses, to the north of Gin Lane in particular, they're not even in a flood zone. It's quite amazing how it changes from one house to another. If I'd have been four houses away from where I am now, there wouldn't have been the problems that I'm foreseeing on Gin Lane, which is actually quite remarkable. And even as you get further towards number one Gin Lane, further towards the west, you actually see that in that area, even some of the houses on the south side of Gin Lane, the ocean side, are not in FEMA zones, which is quite remarkable. The other thing I gave just map 5, just to show you, and you know all of this, I think, anyway, but I thought it might be helpful. On map 5, if you get out towards the end of Meadow, which is in a FEMA zone, if you just take a quick look at those houses on map 5, you'll see a lot of the structures themselves aren't actually in the flood zone. That's because they've already been raised. So, you know, when you start with 50 houses, a lot of these houses are either covered by the historic district regulations or they've already been FEMA compliant. So, the actual number that you actually get where the perfect storm occurs is not that many. But when the perfect storm does occur, boy, does it occur. And I want to show you what the impact of that is likely to be in a minute. Chart 2 on here, just after your maps, and I'm sure you've got this as well, you know, other village codes, which is, I just took the five most recent villages. And actually, just in terms of regular height, Southampton is actually very liberal. We're at 35 feet in a regular zone. You know, so too is Sag Harbor. But the other villages are all smaller. A couple of them have extensions that can go up to 35 feet, but they're caveated. They're caveated by, in one case, the pyramid angle being 30 degrees and not 45 degrees. And in the other case, a pitched roof of being 9 over 12 instead of 7 over 12. So, and also, if you take a look at the pyramid law, I put it down over on the right, that varies tremendously as well. In the R120 zones, we don't have a pyramid law because we didn't need a pyramid law. Why didn't we need it? 30 feet setback, 35 feet high, nothing is ever going to hit the pyramids. So, you didn't need it. So, only when FEMA comes in, you actually need it. But if you take a look, I mean, one of these here is just stupid. Southampton Town is, their 45 degrees starts from FEMA plus 2. That law never has and never will be broken because it hits all of the other laws before it actually gets to that. But the most important and I think interesting thing about pyramid laws is they vary by zone and they become more strenuous and more strict the bigger the zone. So, making an assumption that Southampton Village's pyramid law should be exactly the same as it is in the other areas, the smaller areas, that shouldn't be an assumption. You know, you may want to make it even more restrictive, pyramid law, as you go. Let's just move on a little bit. Number three, whalers. There are certain things that you can do in terms of building which help, and I'm sure you know this as well. If you take a look at Sagaponic, for example, they use whalers in their FEMA zone. And the structure of whalers, I won't go into, it's included in this email. But what it essentially means is you can reduce the house by two and a half feet by stealing some of the top of the pylon by putting a whaler in. All you have to do essentially is put plywood across the top of the pylons. And you'll want to have your engineers check this, but Sagaponic are actually doing this. And by the way, as you check the pyramid laws and your guys check the pyramid laws of other villages, don't just read the code. You need to talk to the Sagaponic village inspector to understand how he interprets that code. Because just as we have been interpreting the code in a different way than it seems to be written, so too have they. You can't just read the code to get this information. So, the use of whalers, you know, is something that you may well want to consider as well as you go through. And finally, you know, just on the bottom here, there are houses that actually comply with the current code as is written now. This house is on Meadow Lane. If you take the height from, you know, the top of the steps, which is essentially the first cross-structural beam on the first floor, to the top of the ridge, that's about 25 feet. And even in a VE 17-foot zone, depending on, you know, what the natural grade is, that house fits. In 99% of FEMA cases, that house would fit. You'd just have to extend it lengthwise to make it bigger.
Do you know where on Meadow Lane this is?
I can email you the number. I think it's 1060. I can't be sure about that.
So, it's past Holsey Neck, obviously.
Exactly, yeah, it is, it is. But the point of that is not that it's in a FEMA, the point of that is, if you take that house in the traditional architecture, you can make it work even in the worst areas. And I thought your idea about having, you know, two separate paths to do these FEMA applications is a brilliant one because you build the expertise in doing that. It just makes so much sense to actually do that. I just wanted to share with you a little bit of the case study that I had for 450 Gin Lane. I'm not going to go through this in detail because you've got details here if you're interested in reading it. But, you know, as you go through these things, these are sort of some of the issues that you face as a resident. So, you know, I gave you a map here of what my local area is and it's part of the historic district and it stretches from Old Town Road to Little Plains Road. And it's north and south of Gin Lane. All of these houses are in the FEMA zone, okay? So, there's nothing on here that isn't in the FEMA zone. And you know the existing character of the area. I'm not going to describe it to you, but you know, the lot sizes are smaller as you get east. This is the very oldest part of Southampton. There's a lot of privacy from neighbors here, all of those things. But, you know, if you go on to chart 3, this is where it really impacts me. This is my guest house. So, this isn't my main house, this is my guest house. But this house is one of the 31 remaining contributing properties in the historic district of Southampton. It's in Sally Spanberg's book. It actually has a whole page in Sally's book. FDR stayed at this house three times in the late 1920s. So, I would contend, you know, this is an important house. The only problem with this house is it's a pre-existing non-conforming. It's eight feet away from the boundary line, which is, you know, to your point. And there's nothing you can do about it. I can't do anything with that house. Where we are here, as chart 4 shows, is very narrow lots. And, you know, chart 5 just gives an indication of how that new house would actually look in that environment. And then I've got a lot of data charts here, which essentially, you know, show a lot of things. And I wanted to skip through a couple of pages and just go on to chart 8 because that's kind of interesting. If the moratorium wasn't in place, this would be one of the tallest houses ever built in Southampton. You know, it's back to, you know, what you're doing. Height defined as, you know, the way height's defined in the code. It's the center of the, of the front of the house off natural grade. And, you know, this is second only to Meadow Lane in terms of height. It's three feet less than Meadow Lane. And if you take a quick look at chart 9, you know, no other village would actually allow this. This is 11 feet on average higher than any other village would allow. It's the tallest house in the neighborhood on chart 10. You know, it's the only other thing that beats it out of those 21 houses that I identified is the bath club. So, this is the sort of impact that these houses have on the neighborhood. And by the way, just to refresh your memory, this isn't neighbor versus neighbor. I am seven feet worse off than I originally was when we were building the glass box on the beach. You know, this is a Southampton issue, it's not a neighbor issue. The only other thing about this is that, you know, the distance between the properties, mine at eight feet from the boundary and this new one at 32 feet, is the shortest in that district. And if you combine the shortest distance between two houses with the tallest, you know what you're going to get. You're going to get what you get on chart 12, which is one house towering over another, which the village is, you know, not supposed to allow. So, this is why in this particular district, if you actually do what you, you know, the law supposedly admits you to do, it changes dramatically the historic, the nature of the historic district. And people are building bigger and bigger houses, you know, chart 14. This house doesn't actually fit in its building envelope. It's got, you know, exemptions from the ZBA because of the wetlands setback. It's a very difficult zone here. It may well get exemptions because of height. So, it's, you know, it pushes that to the limit. But if you take a look at, you know, other houses and put them in their building envelopes in that district, they're small, they're a lot smaller than that. You know, people are allowed to build up to what they're allowed to build, but that really doesn't sort of fit in that district. I'm going to skip just very quickly to the back of this presentation because there's a couple of things that you ought to see, I think, there. You know, the effect on privacy is on chart 18. This is back to the point that I think you'd raised earlier. These have massive effects on privacy because there is no privacy. But, you know, there are alternatives. And I outlined some of them at the back. And, you know, that house on Meadow is a classic example. So, one of the things I think to take out of this is, you know, don't let anybody tell you that by restricting the height, we're going to end up with West Hampton Beach boxes on the beach because that just isn't the case. You can accommodate, I think, very cleverly both things, you know, both having a good structural impact and look of the building and also a sensible height limitation as well. I hope this has, you know, proven helpful at least a little bit. I mean, it's food for thought if nothing else. And I think what you're doing is very brave. There are many people who earn their living sort of getting these houses passed through at the moment. So, it's very, it's little environment. What you're doing, I think, is incredibly brave and I salute you for doing it and taking the time to do it well.
I've got a question for you. We've taken a look at the house, I guess, to the east of 466.
The house to the west is the one, the new one that's been built.
I know, I'm talking about, so, I'm sorry, the...
Well, the house to the east is actually outside of the historic district.
Correct. But I'm just curious what you think of that because that was a house that was significantly rebuilt in the last 10 years, whatever it is.
Yeah.
And what you think of that in terms of how it fits in in the area?
I actually think that house is built on the dune.
Right.
So, it's actually, I don't know what the height of it is. It probably may even comply with the 35 feet. But because it's built on the dune, it's raised. It's quite high above sea level. But I think it's a beautifully constructed house. And I also think that there are no privacy issues because, you know, on one side of it, there is a parking lot there. So, this only happens, I think, when you're so close to your neighbor. And, you know, that house must be from my house and the neighboring houses. I mean, it's 200 feet from my house across the lot and it's at least, I mean, George Soros' house is right there too. It's probably 200, 300 feet to his house.
I guess the other thing that was interesting to us is it's also a house that's turned away from the road and that seemed to make it less impactful.
That's a very good observation. Yeah, because the, actually, a lot of the lots in that area are quite narrow. So, if you can orient them, you know, more towards the ocean. I don't know that that would have helped in 450's case because their building envelope is very constrained.
So, restricted, yeah.
That what they would need to do is have a dune setback, which they didn't ask for, but which in certain cases, you know, you may want to consider too.
Right, right. Right, right. Interesting.
I just want to comment, the house to the east used part of an original estate of H.H. Rogers.
That's right.
Part of it was destroyed, and I think it was, I can't remember the lawyer that bought the place, and he did major renovations on it. But that's part of an old building that's been there for, you know, oh, probably 100 years.
Yeah, but it's been owned by Mrs. Condon, I think.
Condon, that's it. William Condon.
Yeah, yeah. It's been owned by them since the 70s.
Yes.
Yeah, that's right. Well, you know, the house, the beautiful house, actually, I think it is to the, to the west of me, was the old Nanny Watkins' house, I think, wasn't it? And the history of that house is phenomenal too. I mean, you know, those, originally, those lots, 450 and 436, were part of one lot, and they were part of one lot until Dr. Thomas split them up in 1882 into two, that's why the lots are so small. They were split up to actually make way for cottages for people from the, the city who were actually coming to rent cottages. And then the original cottage on that site was knocked over in the hurricane in 1938. So, the carriage house is what's actually left. But the carriage house, actually, the Watkins and the famous architect actually lived in, you know, since 1938, so...
You own the house on the corner of Old Town?
The one right setback on the...
Yes, I'd worked in a house many years ago. You know, there's a, there was an armory room in that, it was part of the light bulb stations.
Still there.
It's still there?
It was part of the condition for making the changes on the house.
Okay.
That, you should come and visit, that, that room is still...
We didn't know it was there, we were working there one day and we discovered it. We were drilling a hole through the wall, we found a void, and we cut the wall open, we found the steps and the set of steel doors, and that was the armory down there.
That's exactly right, it was for the Coast Guard, right? And that is still there. I mean, it's, it's full of a little bit of mold and so on, and we've got a locked door on it, but, but it's still there.
Marcel de Grave owned it, he's from Argentina.
Really? Well, the other part of the house that's original is actually the library, that's all the old paneling, which I think had to be preserved as well. And that architecture that you face from the, from the street, from the parking lot, that, that sort of cupola, that's preserved from the original as well. So there's certain parts of the house that are, that are preserved from the original, although the house itself has undergone tremendous change in, you know, the early 2000s.
Is that the last piece of Philip Johnson architecture left in Manhattan, basically?
It may well be, yeah.
With the Fonzworth House coming down.
Yeah, yeah.
Other comments, questions?
If I can play devil's advocate, on this Chart Twelve, where you show the housing closest me proposed, house towers over neighbor, the house that is low, that does not comply with FEMA right now.
No, it doesn't.
So eventually, that house will also be razed. So let's say the comparison you're making right now may be valid today, but not in the future.
That house is 100 years old. I mean, that is the house, that, that house is the one that I showed you at the front of the book, the one that FDR stayed in. But you're absolutely right. I mean, it did survive the 1938 storm, but if we get another storm, there's nothing I can do better. And by the way, that's part of the 31 contributing houses, I can't move it. You know, we would lose that in the storm. But, you know, that's true of quite a few of the historic houses. If we have that 1938 storm, none of these houses are FEMA protected.
I mean, I guess, and it's a good point. So, you know, two, two of the things that we're sort of very aware of is, whatever rules we set are going to have to work both for new houses and existing houses. Because we're assuming a number of existing houses, people are going to choose to raise them for, for, for insurance reasons, for, for other reasons.
Or rebuild them.
Or, or, or have to rebuild them. So, so I guess, well, number one, as I said at the beginning, and I think you're alluding to, is we're assuming this is an issue that's growing, not shrinking. So while it is right now 31 maybe houses in the Historic District, it's also other houses outside the Historic District, and it's hard to believe that over the next 10 to 20 years, those districts are not going to creep further, further north, I guess.
Well, they have done, right?
You know, and, and I, I think one of the things we've tried to do in the last 10 years with zoning is to make the zoning sort of not be just about today, but be able to survive as things change. Second is, you know, and I, I certainly, you know, I think it's, it's very, very helpful in your analysis of how our heights differ. I mean, what I would say is, and that was, that was a factor we took into account when we looked in the smaller zones, and it is, in a way, the challenge in Southampton is, we have more of a history of taller houses than most villages have. So, you know, if you look at Gin Lane, for example, there are a number of houses that are tall. There are very, very few, for example, if you look at East Hampton, you could count probably on one hand the houses that go that tall. But, and these are houses from, from the turn of the last century, not this century. So, so we have had a history, and that was the same thing with the smaller zones, where we found there were streets like Post Crossing, for example, that had a history of smaller. So, what we're trying to balance is reflecting the history here, which is a little more complicated than it might be in Sagaponic, which I would eventually say has virtually no history. And it's basically been built since, 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 since the, since the Vietnam War. And, you know, and at the same time, which we understand, we're now talking about really different heights. So, you know, I think what's really becoming so difficult to deal with now is, as you say, you're dealing with houses that with the 35 plus, in some cases, and other 15 plus two, you're getting to these...
17 plus two in that case.
Yeah, you're getting to a 52 foot height.
But I've actually given you the actual heights of houses.
Yeah, we saw.
Only between Little Plains Road and Old Town Road.
Right.
Doesn't go further down.
Right.
But you'll see that even by those standards, and some of those are over 35 feet. Louise Mc Bay's house, you know, is 38 feet. Those houses, even by the new standards, are, I mean, the, the house that's proposed for 450 is 44 feet, Louise's is 38. So, you know, it may not be 10 feet, but there's a, there's a differential there.
No, 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 I think we agree. I mean, I just, you know, you're right, the problem is not so much the 35 feet as much what the 35 feet means now, as opposed to what it used to be.
If I can play devil's advocate again, I mean, in, in most of the village, although we have the 35 feet, because of the rules that we have, such as the pyramid or whatnot, you would never reach that height in, in certain lots. You only reach it in the larger lots, which makes the houses beautiful. What we don't want to do is flatten the roofs, we would like to that architecture.
Absolutely.
Now, in this FEMA area, of course, it's a problem when it's compounded with all the other factors.
Yeah, but if you take a look at my very last chart in there, our houses that can do. And by the way, you know, you can steal two and a half feet by doing new Sagaponic, but you can steal two and a half feet by doing what? There's things that you can do. It may still be that, you know, the rules are higher than Sagaponic, for example, but there are things that you can do to actually contain them.
Architecture makes the difference.
It does.
Yeah, I mean, I think one thing we would certainly agree with is if there is a pyramid law applied in these zones, it would be different than the way the pyramid law works in the smaller zones. To be effective and to reflect type of houses also, we are, you know, in the FEMA zones, we are clearly dealing with houses that are going to be larger than the houses that we've been dealing with in the smaller zones.
It depends on the lots.
Yeah, it depends on the lots. Right, yeah, you're still going to have...
They're still pretty big houses.
So you might have to do it this way rather than this way.
Other...
Just one more, just a little comment that, you know, you mentioned about some houses not being in the FEMA zone, and that's one of the items that we're going to review with the engineering consultant, is the accuracy of those FEMA maps. And, see, and also the fact that we've had, those FEMA maps are really dated back to 1988, they're from aerial photography, and then the, the landscape and the, there's been so much regrading.
That's right, which gets to Meadow Lane point.
Right. And what happens is that also in the areas where you don't have this regrading, you're going to create some channels, that in case of a real storm, the speed of the water is going to increase substantially and be able to reach areas that are actually now not in, within the flood zones.
Old Town Pond is...
Exactly.
That's, that's, I mean, I think that's probably one of the reasons why my house is so... But those are, those are, those are excellent points. I mean, yeah, obviously, I mean, I think, but, you know, one thing though, the houses that are not in the FEMA zone now, back to your point, depending on what FEMA does, right, I mean, you can appeal it, but then if they change it again, you know, you...
Well, just use the easy example, the FEMA zones do not include Job's Lane, but we know in the hurricane, Job's Lane was flooded. So, you've got to believe they're going to change, right?
Yeah, how does that...
Right, they're going to change over time.
Just add a little history, that the house on the corner of Gin Lane and Wyndage, the new one is there. There used to be a house owned by Gordon Hamersley. The garage is left, the main house was destroyed in the 38 hurricane. I've got some photographs of it showing the, his grand piano upside down in his living room. And he turned around and built another house over on, called Marshlands, over North Sea.
This has been a mission for me since I've been here, to learn the history of the area. I love the beauty of Southampton, there's only one better thing than the beauty of Southampton, using the people in Southampton, there's a lot of great people in Southampton.
There's one more thing, as a volunteer fire, as a fireman, you start getting up to 50 feet, and with firemen, we have to go up and ventilate roofs, and we don't have fires on nice weather. You could have bad storms and stuff like that, and you go up on a roof that's 50 feet high and try to ventilate that thing. You know, you're putting guys' lives on the line. So I think the height is definitely going to be a major factor.
Right. Has this been submitted, you know, to the consultants?
No.
Okay, so we'll take care of that.
I haven't seen, so I'm more than happy to...
No, we'll make sure that happens.
I, I just wanted to leave you with, with one thought, you know. I am a neighbor who's opposed the, the neighbor next, next door, but I think that's finished, it's with the moratorium. This isn't a neighbor-to-neighbor thing. What I've tried to do here is present to you a Southampton issue. You know, I'm actually worse off with the, the building that's proposed at the moment, it's the right building for the area, but I'm worse off with it. So I, I, I do have a stake in this, but I've tried to be as objective in presenting this to you as I can.
Right, I think, you know, I, I, our goal always with this zoning is to make it more understandable and predictable, so the sort of circumstance you have, where you're put in a spot to propose a neighbor, doesn't happen. And that should be really the goal of the zoning. So everyone understands what they have and what can happen, and it doesn't seem as arbitrary a process as it may seem to be.
That would be wonderful, but forgive me if I'm a little suspicious about your guidelines, because the ARB has the best set of guidelines of any board on the East Coast. They have 89 pages of design guidelines, but a glass box can still be proposed on Gin Lane, and it takes $150,000 to kill it. So, with respect, your guidance...
I understand that. Okay, other comments, questions?
You lost some money on the way through.
I was going to tell you something at the end.
It's not going to pay for the zoning.
Okay, I understand.
It's a lot less than he's paying. Any other comments, questions?
Oh, go ahead, go right in.
Yeah.
Thank you, my name is R. Bliss, I'm a private resident of 88 Meadow Lane, here in Southampton Village. I have a letter here which I'd like a young lady to distribute. I'll be very brief, I'll read this to you. I reasonably and respectfully request that the planning commission include in its consideration homeowners who wish to elevate their homes to comply with the new FEMA elevation requirements, and are currently in compliance with current village codes when you consider any proposed changes in the zoning code. Homes which complied with and still comply with the Southampton Village zoning codes may wish to elevate the home to comply with the new FEMA elevation requirements without materially changing the footprint of the home. Any other material alterations would of course have to comply with the new zoning code. I believe there are more than 100 private homes along the Atlantic Ocean in the village, and many more surrounded, surround Hedy Creek, Cooper's Neck, Taylor, Ozzineck Pond, Cooper's, Agawam, Old Town, Wickapog, Philbus Pond, which have been impacted by the new FEMA elevation requirement. I believe that analysis, the real estate assessed valuation of these properties will reveal that they pay an important percentage of the real estate taxes when compared with the total real estate taxes paid by the 4,300 total properties in the village. The village has been able to more than double its budget in recent years. A newly adopted code, which could prevent such property owners to comply with the newly adopted FEMA elevation requirements, could materially reduce assessed and market valuation of these homes that are now in compliance with the village codes. Many of such dwellings are in Historic District, and many of such dwellings in Historic District are Historic dwellings. If the dwellings are prohibited to comply with the new FEMA elevation requirements as a result of new proposed village zoning code, I believe there will be a reduction in the number of dwellings that will be saved. Banks require that mortgage properties comply with FEMA standards. Insurance companies are reducing or refusing insurance coverage for non-FEMA compliant dwellings. The goal of preserving the historic nature of the village will be made much more difficult. Certain of our historic homes are three stories high, and still others will exceed village elevation restrictions if owners comply with the new FEMA elevation standards. The result will accelerate the potential for more tear downs. New purchasers will elect a tear down rather than deal with homeowner insurance problems, mortgage issues with respect to a non-FEMA compliant dwelling. These, these issues can be resolved if we focus on this fact. I believe that if property owners are not permitted to comply with FEMA elevation requirements because of proposed village code changes, there will be materially adverse impact on the market prices of these properties. With a decline in market prices, there will be decline in the assessed valuation for real estate tax purposes, and will raise the real estate tax burden on other village taxpayers. If the new code prohibits the elevation of a home, which would protect property values and provide safety to village citizens, I fear that this could be viewed as a taking. The Fourth Amendment of the US Constitution holds that property owners are protected against unreasonable seizures of their property. In this instance, an agency of the US government, FEMA, is advocating new elevation standards. If the village prohibits property owners who are currently in compliance with village building codes to comply with these new FEMA standards, I believe that this unfair, I believe that this is unfair and unreasonable, and could be deemed a taking by the village. If litigation determines that affected property owners were victims of a taking, the village might be liable to pay the difference in the fair market value before the taking and after the taking to the damaged property owners. By that, by my judgment, that would be an enormous sum of money. Again, I repeat, I reasonably and respectfully request that the planning commission include in its consideration homeowners who wish to elevate their homes to comply with the new FEMA elevation requirements and are currently in compliance with current village codes when you consider any proposed changes in the zoning code. I've asked this be included in a public, in notes for regular public hearing. I thought this was a public hearing, I believe I was not correct. Back to FEMA, and this is not in my letter. Not too many years ago, we challenged the coastal erosion hazard line on my property, saying that it was much, it was not correctly placed when it was targeted. After spending quite a bit of money, we determined that the line was not correct. I was told that inspectors had come down there with, and measured the property lines with rulers and micro equipment, and that there was no change, no chance that we could change the coastal erosion hazard line. I contacted Dr. Bukanovic, who was in charge of the project of establishing the Coastal Erosion Hazard Act. And I told him that, of all the details that I heard from FEMA and the state of New York as how they determined the line, he told me it was false and materially misleading. They sent out a message to anyone who could do this kind of work, and they told them what the budget would be. Dr. Bukanovic said that with the budget that was being proposed to set the coastal erosion hazard line, and the work that they expected them to do could not be achieved. So what they actually did is they went up to Cooper's Beach and did the analysis, and then he went to Windmill Lane and did an analysis. However they did it, I don't know. They just drew a line, excuse me, they just drew a line. When that line was challenged as to its accuracy, all the agency folded, and even, and the comments they offered to us verbally, never in writing, proved to be materially false, misleading. Moving forward to recent years, the FEMA engaged a private aircraft or company to fly down the coast, there's a name for this particular process, and I did prepare for that.
LIDAR.
LIDAR, right. When, when they, LIDAR, when they did the LIDAR analysis of the stretch of beach from Cooper's Neck to Windmill, I focused primarily on the properties that were, the Dune Church, properties facing Meadow Club, and the intermediate properties mine, and then towards Cooper's Beach. I had squires and holdens come and do an analysis of my property and some of the adjoining I had squires and Holden come and do an analysis of my property and some of the adjoining properties, not all of those that I just mentioned. The LIDAR was incorrect. It was incorrect on my property and some of the adjoining properties. Squires and Holden said that their actual ability to go on the properties and measure them by surveys trumped the LIDAR. So we're dealing with a government agency, and I'll make no comments about government agencies, because maybe the president is listening, have come along here and they have dictated major changes. My experience in the past has been that the quality of the work that has been done and the results that have come from are not particularly carefully prepared. I want to thank you very much for listening to my comments, and have a good evening.
I'm so glad you brought up the issue of valuation, though. But I've always pointed out that whatever we do with the zoning, we also must always be cognizant that it has to be something that will improve the quality of life and valuation and not give it deterioration.
The village has, and I don't have my numbers in front of me, the village has gone from $10 million to $20 million plus or minus in budgets.
In budgets, yes.
In budgets, not in tax.
Right, right.
Well, the only way you can have a budget is if you collect taxes. And if you, and I want to be very careful, I always say this, if you take a look at the properties adjoining the Atlantic Ocean and all of the waterfront properties we have that I mentioned earlier, and if you looked at the amount of taxes that these properties bring into the village as a percentage of the total 4,300, 4,300, 343 village properties, I think you'll find that they are an important contribution.
Of course.
And you talk about shooting yourself in the foot or killing the golden goose.
Right.
These people come here, they pay the taxes, not many of them contribute children to the school district, many of them are gone four to six months of the year, so they don't enjoy the services that they pay for, and everybody complains about these rich people up on the ocean, you know. They pay your bills, baby, you better enjoy yourself. If you want to discriminate against these people, that's fine, that is.
I think there is no intent, and I don't think there is any consideration on this commission about evaluation. Here, there are issues that need to be dealt with for the life, safety, and health of our community, and this is what we're addressing here. I don't think there's any evaluation.
And let me, let me just add, because I think we're on very much the same page, I think. You know, we have been assuming that whatever rules we pass have to work for houses being raised, and I'm assuming a number of houses will end up, even maybe not in the next six months, but over time, I'm assuming whoever has an existing house that can be raised, not all of them can be, as you know, but to the extent that people are able to, I'm assuming they're going to face a lot of pressure to do that, obviously, and our rules are going to have to work for that. So I think, I just want to correct any misapprehension, we are assuming that the rules or the new text that comes, that we come up with is going to have to allow people to raise their houses and deal with it, and then we're going to have similar issues that we have with your houses.
Still be able to build beautiful homes.
For example, Thompson Dean and others filed a lawsuit which was declined by the court with respect to elevation and other issues. If you look at the first house east of Mr. Dean's property, I would say that how.
Can I ask a favor, please? In the planning commission, we're not about individual application, so rather than referring to individual applications, put it in order six.
There is a house in the village, I will not describe where it is, which I believe is three stories high. I know it's in a historic district. I suspect it may be a historic house, but I'm not sure of that. It is in a hostile VE zone, and I don't know what zone it is. I think if that house were to be elevated to comply with FEMA compliance, that you're going to see a house that goes up, I'm not going to play with numbers because I can't, I don't have the facts, and you're going to have all these people come running, running up and down Meadow Lane and Gin Lane and ranting and raving that the house is too high.
We are aware of those issues, we really are. I just want to, we're very cognizant that these rules are going to have to work also as existing houses get raised, so.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, thank you.
Hi, I'm Melissa Detavich from Peconic Environmental Associates. I am also a village taxpayer. My husband is fourth generation East Ender, so I do care what happens in this village. I do care what happens on the whole East End. I also happen to make my living doing environmental planning, and I can sleep well, I can look at myself in the mirror every night when I go to sleep. That being said, when we're talking about FEMA, when they did have all the public hearings, I don't know if anyone here went to any of the public hearings when they were adopting a new FEMA. They actually did have two public hearings in the village and showed how they came up with these new flood zones. It was computer modeling. Mr. Bliss was correct in that they did use this program called LIDAR, which is actually laser, they actually shoot a laser down, it goes back in the plane, and that's how they figure out topography. That being said, he is also correct in that it's not as accurate as actually doing a survey done. I've had the experience in the past of having to get FEMA flood zone lines moved, and that's what you do, is you go and you have a survey, go out there and reaffirm what the actual topography is. I'd also like to say that what was very interesting, I went over this with one of the FEMA representatives, is when you look at the new FEMA maps and you look especially at Meadow Lane, there's a lot of X zones that were clients of mine, because I've been doing this for over 20 years, who had as part of their FEMA permits and everything, they had broth fill and were now considered X zones, which really, there's very, there shouldn't be an X zone on a barrier island. Pretty much, it's a barrier beach over there. But what was also interesting is that the FEMA zones on the bay side of Meadow Lane actually went down. So instead of going higher, they actually had the opposite effect. So we had clients who actually were now FEMA compliant who weren't before, which is interesting. The other thing you should know is that when they say the houses are FEMA compliant because they meet the elevation, that's not necessarily true. It's based on what their foundations are, do they have the breakaway walls? If they're in a V, they're on the beach. So just to give you a little information on that. I'm also involved actually in the public hearing and the exemption request that Mr. Smith referred to, and being a closed hearing, I don't, I don't think it's proper to discuss it at this forum. However, I will advise this board to, and I would ask you actually, to take a look at the tape from last week's exemption hearing, because there was some information brought up. We actually, our office had gotten the exemption for 22 Gin Lane, and as part of that, we had submitted into the record the FEMA maps for Fairleigh and actually what the existing heights of those houses are and the ridge heights. There's been this whole discussion and misinformation, there was a half-page ad in the press that has misinformation, and that's what I'm concerned about, there's a lot of misinformation, and we want to deal with facts. I would ask that you have Nelson Puppin Forkes take a look at that report and actually go through it for accuracy. That's what I ask. A little bit of knowledge can be very scary. I do this for 20 years, like I said, I don't have a vested interest, except that I want you to do the right thing on this. The information about the whalers, I do a lot of work in Sagaplanic Village, a whaler will only gain you a foot. It's not required by village of Sagaplanic. I have four projects under construction, two of which are on the ocean there. It's not an issue. We comply with, I work very hand-in-hand with John Wizma, I do a lot of work with the village trustees and the ARB over there also. What else did I want to add? Oh, and the main thing I'd like to talk about is the fact that this shouldn't be about height. It should be about ridge height. Ridge height, if you look at a house in particular that may be next to Mr. Smith's house, the proposed house is actually going to be lower in ridge height than either house on either side. Mr. Bliss also brings up a good point about, go ahead, yes.
Yeah, I'd really like to avoid discussing individual applications if we can.
I'm trying not to, but I had to hear a half hour of one particular application. I think guest house, it was Ashley Garage. But Mr. Bliss has a good point. In the town of Southampton, when they changed, they recently did this in August, I believe it was May or August, they changed the zoning code that if you want to raise your house, your existing house, to comply with FEMA, you do not have to get a height variance, you do not have to get a pyramid law variance. Just want to let you, and also pyramid law is taken from BFE plus two. It's not taken from average existing grade. So just so you know that, BFE does play a.
Pyramid law, you mean in East Hampton?
No, in Southampton Town.
Okay.
Because I've actually had the, even in some instances in Southampton, our office has been required to get variances for that on certain tight lots. And really, I just want to harp on the ridge height, because you, when, the town of Southampton has a maximum height of 42 feet, and that's really what I hear is going on here. We want, we don't want houses sticking out to look unusual. We do have some rather large houses on Fairleigh and that may, that were originally in an X zone, which may, which are now in AE zones, I believe, which may in the future require to be raised too. So I think that's something you have to look at. I believe the house that you mentioned before, were you talking about the one that's next to Cooper's Beach is under construction?
I was, although that is another house we have seen.
Okay, okay.
I guess is one way to put it. It's hard not to see.
It's hard not to see, but everybody said the same thing about the Sugarman House, don't bring a specific house, but everything looks worse when it's under construction up like that way. I think the main concern should be about safety. I think insurance, Mr. Bliss is very correct about insurance, being able to insure a house and being able to stay and live in Southampton Village without taking, I mean, I believe there's a stretch of Nap Peak Stretch in East Hampton Town where it's a Cobra Zone. You cannot get flood insurance over there. You have to go through Lloyd's. We don't want Southampton Village to be like that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Jay Deising, a resident of the village. I don't make my living in the building industry. I don't live on the ocean. I'm a big stakeholder in the village, but I'm not a stakeholder in this argument. So in any event, I really want to thank Horace for his work, because I think you're correct, it was in May that the town changed their code to allow people to raise homes, and I think that's something we have to, we have to do here. I think that's really important. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Smith, because he's obviously put a huge amount of work in bringing data here that I think you should consider and take a look at, and it's from, you know, a somewhat different viewpoint. I think a lot of the data that is out there is coming from people who have a vested interest in developing along the ocean side, and the bigger the house, the bigger the reward. And so I think what we also want not to have happen is a little bit of discretion and a little bit of compatibility and a little bit of an ARB that actually can look at scale, can look at the impact that a particular design has. And I think that, you know, for example, when you, when you look at one of the houses that's gone on Herrick Road recently, it's the old Timmins property, and they've done a very nice job of kind of scaling up the house. And I think it's probably a huge house, but it looks good in there, and it's worked, and they've done a great design on that property, and it fits in with the neighborhood, and I think that's something that is really critical, to make sure that our boards are capable and prepared to make those decisions and those judgments, and that they have the authority to do it. I think they do, and they just need the support, so. Thanks very much.
So can I just make one point for that? I've never heard LIDAR before, but when I was doing my research, 21 houses I researched, 20 of them had topographical surveys, mostly done by these guys, is it Scott Holden or Squires Holden? So I sort of wonder whether, you know, if you have to do something like this, somebody might be engaging squires Holden to do it. Now, some of them were private, these surveys were private, but I actually knocked on doors and asked people, and they gave me surveys, and they do have topographical information on it, which if it's more accurate than LIDAR, maybe that's a better way.
I mean, I think what we're going to try to do from, and this is easier said than done, but we are going to try to come up with a definition of height that's more, more obvious than it is now. So we're hoping we can come up with a definition that doesn't change and that everyone knows what it is. Because one of the things that does concern us is people are actually arguing about height as each application comes in, which really should not be the case, and I will tell you is not the case in other municipalities. So one thing we really want to do is make sure that there's a very clear definition of height that everyone can understand, and then we can all argue whether it should be 30 or 35 or 38 or whatever, 52 or whatever, but at least it would help if we would start with everyone understanding height in the same way. And that's one of the problems, just with a code that is fairly old and hasn't really changed in that characteristic right now. So I think that's, I think you're right about survey, but we're trying to come up with something that is actually even easier, so it's not dependent on each property doing its survey and finding out what they think the height is, people arguing what the height is and everything else.
What you're referring to is where to start.
Right, where to start.
I think it's also very important what she said about the ridge height.
Right, right.
We may be talking about absolute heights, but maybe we should be looking at the ridge height, so one house could be 40 feet and the other one is 35, and they're at the same ridge level.
I commend you for doing that, because anything that's easier, I think, is probably better. But, you know, don't be confused that the definition of height isn't very clear in the Southampton Code. It is, there's a whole paragraph that defines it. And by the way, as I looked at the five other codes for the other villages, it's not dissimilar to any of the other villages, it's very clear. What happens with a couple of them, and I put it in the chart in here, in the FEMA zones, is they say, in a FEMA zone, it is either the lower of 32, 30, pick the number off grade, or 42 feet above sea level. Two of the codes actually have that. I put them actually in there. So it's the lower of A or B, so they look at it in two different ways, but maybe some of them as well.
Other questions, comments? Yes.
I just wanted to, oh, Lisa's the logo architect in Southampton. I just wanted to address your concerns about the fire safety, and I'm not sure that you're aware that if you do have a two-and-a-half story house, you're required to sprinkle the house. So all of these new houses that will have two-and-a-half stories.
Is that the whole house or just part of it?
The whole house. The whole house has to be, has to have a fire sprinkle system. And furthermore, New York State has a code, Southampton Town has just started, I guess about a year ago, they just started implementing where there's, and I apologize because I don't know, there's three criteria for it, but if you have more than 12 feet to the floor level for more than 50% of the house, or, you know, there's criteria involved, they require you to sprinkle the house, even if it's not a three-story house. So they are trying to address those concerns in terms of getting you guys there, being safe.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Okay, so, sorry, make your comment.
I don't, I'm not sure. Susan Stevenson, I live in the village. In some of these contentious situations that have come up, I noticed and went back and looked at some CBA meetings where these variances had been granted before the other issues had come up. In your suggestions, sir, that there would be a special process, would there be a way, and a lot of this has to do with privacy, that it seems to have gotten ahead of itself in these applications in certain ways that then caused tremendous problems for the neighbors. So in the new, in your suggested process, would there be a slowing down or, I don't actually know, I've thought about this, I can't figure out how you could do it, but would there be a way to address some of this? Because once they get the go-ahead to be seven feet away, then when you start talking about planting a hedge that's 400 feet high like Jack and the Beanstalk, that's not going to live, or the way the house is built up so water will come down these walls, these are serious situations that seem to have been, in a sense, could have been maybe ameliorated if the ZBA had already, as of right, given these people the ability to be so close to their neighbor and have so little room for any kind of screening and building the septica. I mean, from being in these meetings, I would never want a house on the beach, ever. So I'm glad I don't have one. But anyway, that seems to have been like, once it gets started, it gets to be a more difficult process and contentious, and it would be great if these, if whatever you do makes it a less contentious situation, because it is tearing our village apart. Thank you.
I think, I think it's an excellent point, and one of the things we are all looking at, as Mark alluded to, is what the right steps are in the process. Great. Because it seems a fairly disjointed process right now. So one board's looking at one thing, another board's looking at another thing, they really can't cross.
And I went back and looked at the CBA meetings and thought, you know. And, yeah, I went back and looked at the CBA meetings and thought, you know, wait a minute, but by the time they get to like the ARB, it's too late, all of this has been put in. And people have spent a gazillion dollars also.
Which is what we're trying to, I mean, honestly, as you know, I think what we've tried to do over time is avoid these circumstances where people are spending a lot of money, because boards are faced with applications without very clear rules. I mean, I think if there's any goal we have, as it was in the small zones, as it was in the Village Business District, is to try to create rules that people know before they go in, what they can do, and so neighbors don't feel like they're suddenly shocked to understand that something can happen they didn't realize could happen.
But I also don't know a rich person who has not gotten bad advice.
Everybody gets bad advice, not only rich people, I assure you.
Everybody has, so I don't feel so sorry for them.
We'll also try to, also raise the bar in terms of submissions, and requirements of what needs to be submitted.
Oh, oh, so it's precise.
Yeah, so we will be asking for more diagrams, 3D graphics, that give a more accurate representation of what is going to be built, and how it impacts the neighborhood properties.
Great.
Rather than now, there is no standards for that.
Just a single.
Right.
Paul, just a little bit of history lesson, when Dr. T. Gaylord Thomas built his first house in 1867, the locals told him the ocean was a bad neighborhood.
Right.
And they called it cottages, but it was a mass of houses.
Right, right, all I can say is.
Like in Newport.
Is the real people are brave, are people who build houses in the ocean now, so anyway. Any other comments, questions? Okay, so we're going to keep the record open, as I think everyone knows, and we are going to be having a meeting and hearing on January 8th at 5:00. The consultants will be at that meeting, they're going to begin to talk about some of the things they've been finding, and I would encourage both you, and if you can also get your neighbors and friends and business associates to attend, that would be great. So thank you very much, and nothing else, I'm going to close the meeting for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.